... everybody, this is a place where we are born into this country. Most of us are born into this country here tonight. There are people who did fight for freedom, that they went overseas to fight against oppression from others. And I would like, as D-Day approaches this week, I'd like to make sure everybody takes some time this week to remember those in that memorance. And also for those who have fought to keep us free here in our town of Apex. And I'd like to take the moment also to think for wisdom for all of us as we make decisions here tonight. So please join me for a moment of silence. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to everybody here tonight. I want to make sure that you've got a chance to see the agenda that was printed on the podium outside. That's the white stapled sheets. Also, if you intend to speak tonight, there is a guideline sheet that's yellow out there on the podium that you need to pick up and make sure you're familiar with, those guidelines and the public speaking policies. We also have the public hearing and public forum signup sheets on the ledge here. So if you intend to speak, you do need to put your name and address on there in order to be called when that time comes. The clerk will be picking those up very shortly. As we move into the meeting, we see there are no presentations, so we move to consent agenda. Consent agenda are typically items that are considered to be non-controversial and are generally passed with a single vote. As always, any council member who wishes to pull one of the items for later discussion can certainly do so. I've not heard anything, so at this time, I'll ask if there is a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second discussion. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously. And for the record, noting that one council member has not yet made it here, but we do have a quorum tonight. Now we get to the point of setting the regular meeting agenda. I have heard no changes to the agenda, so this time, I'd like to ask if there's a meeting or a motion to approve the meeting agenda.
Moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, the agenda is set. We now move to public forum. This is a time for you to speak to us. We listen while you speak. There's a three-minute limit, and if you have signed up, I will be calling your name. And during the three minutes, as you present your items, we will listen, as we always do. And it is an opportunity for us to consider what you have said. And this time, I'll take the sheet from the clerk. Thank you. So I have one signup, Leah Cravat. I'm sorry if I got... Is that close? Okay. And it says you're speaking on behalf of four or more people who are present. Could I see your hands, who Leah is speaking on behalf of? All right, very well. As is custom, you have nine minutes or up to that. And please come forward, Leah, and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Leah Cravat, and I live on 2429 Castleburg Drive, Apex, North Carolina. Mayor Olive, Mayor Pro Tem, Nicole Dozier, and council members, thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Leah Cravat. I am a volunteer with Students to Make Action for Gun Sense in America. This coming Saturday, June 8th, 2019, we are holding our Wear Orange event to raise awareness of gun violence in America and to honor victims and survivors of gun violence. For this event, we are asking our town mayors to sign a proclamation to make Friday, June 7th, Gun Violence Awareness Day, to honor and remember victims of gun violence and proclaim that we, as a country, must do more to reduce and prevent gun violence. On April 30th, 2019, the University of North Carolina at Charlotte had an active shooter on campus. My brother Jacob, who graduated from Apex High School, was on campus that day, but fortunately, he was in a different building, though he was on lockdown for several hours before he could return home. Two students were killed that day, and four were injured. Of the four, two were from Apex, Drew Biscaro and Sean Dehart. Drew was just recently released from the hospital, a second time after recovering from an infection that from the gunshot wounds he received that day in Charlotte. More than 100 people are killed by gun violence a day, and countless more are impacted by it. Children are growing up in a world where lockdown drills are commonplace in school, and their pleas to legislate to make schools safer are all on deaf ears. As mayor, I am sure you know that your highest priority is the safety of all the residents here in Apex. I don't ever want to feel like I did on April 30th. I spent the entire evening scared for my brother. I just wanted him home. I just wanted to hug him and hold him close. My parents spent the evening worried for my brother. My mom couldn't stop crying. And I'm sure Cheryl Stallings, who is running for Apex Town Council, was also very worried and distraught. Her son Charlie is my brother's roommate at college. There are so many students from Apex who are at UNC Charlotte. And I believe Mayor Pro Tem Nicole Dozier's son was also at Charlotte, and they should all feel safe at their school. All the students in Apex, in elementary, middle, and high school, should feel safe in their community and at their school. We didn't ask Drew or Sean's family to come to this meeting because we want to respect their privacy, but we ask you, Mayor Olive, to sign this proclamation to honor them. Two of Apex's zones, they were horribly impacted by gun violence, and their lives will never ever be the same. We also want to honor all the other victims, survivors, and their families who have been impacted by gun violence. Sign the proclamation for all the students in Apex and for those Apex natives who were on UNC Charlotte campus that horrible day. This issue is about Drew, Sean, Jacob, and Charlie, and all the other students, family, faculty members, and staff who are forever impacted by gun violence on April 30th in Charlotte. This is not a partisan issue. It's not a left or right issue. This is an Apex issue. Moms to Make Action and Students to Make Action would also like you guys to join us on Saturday, June 8th, at our Wear Orange event at John Chavis Community Park on Martin Luther, Jr. Boulevard in Raleigh at 11:00 a.m. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Leah.
Thank you. You did a very good job.
Thank you.
I will be more than happy to look at this, take this home and look through it. I'll also... Actually, I would like to have a follow-up phone number, if you feel comfortable providing that, in case I have some thoughts or questions on that.
Thank you.
That'd be fine. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, okay, great.
On the other side.
I see a card.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. If I have questions, I'll follow up on that. All right, thank you very much. And I do realize it's not easy to come up here and do what you did, so, well done.
Thank you. Very good.
All right, we now move into a time of public hearings. Public hearing number one. This is a possible motion for question of annexation, and Diane Ken, our planning director, will be presenting. And this is annexation number 641 into the town's corporate limits.
We don't have the right one here. Technical difficulties. So this one is for the West Village project. Oh, thank you. Sorry about that. West Village is located near 540 and Old US 1. It's across from the future Pleasant Park. It is a project that was approved by the town council previously, and they've been going through the construction plan process, and they've gotten to the point where they need to annex in order to get public water and sewer, and so that we can sign their construction plans. They are annexing the residential portions of the project, as well as the public street network that goes through the non-residential portions that's required as part of their initial phases. Planning staff does recommend approval.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Diane before she sits down? All right, thank you. And as this is a public hearing, is there an applicant? Or is this a standard? Okay. So I'll open the public hearing. Looking at the sheet, no one has signed up, so I'll close the public hearing and refer the matter to council for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. In discussion on the motion to approve? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, that passes unanimously. Are we now conclude public hearings? There is no old business, so we now move to unfinished business. This is a consideration of the possible motion related to the public art policy. Tom Colwell is presenting. Mr. Colwell.
All right, thank you for your time again this evening on public art. I appreciate it. A couple of weeks ago, you asked the town staff and public art committee to go back and take a look at the public art policy document, to make a couple of modifications in there, and then also to make a recommendation on the sculpture locations. That's what I want to walk through today and field any questions on that I can. So in the public art policy document, if you look on page four, it should be in your package, there are some edits that the intention of those are for some clarity for town staff in the planning for various public facilities and how art would be integrated into those facilities in the future. So it's a little bit of clarifying language on that portion of the document. Page five, the edits there are some additional details on the call for artists, on the duration of those calls, and what to do if there's fewer than three responses. And then on page six, there are edits for public, a little more clarity on how we could get public input on projects, and also how we get input and discussion with the historical society, if it's appropriate, depending on the location of the project. So those are the edits that were made to the policy document, so I just want to see if there's any questions or clarifications needed.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Colwell?
So I recognize some of the edits, because I was helping with this, but is there a color coding strategy?
Well, it was a variety of people, and so there's layers of different edits, and then the system basically just, you know, color codes for whoever might have made those edits. But the reality is, everything that's crossed out would not be included. Everything that is not crossed out would be included in the final version.
Okay. And so we had some suggestions at the last meeting, and then we sent it back to the staff and you guys. So you guys, the committee read through it, and some of the edits may have been their suggestions, and was it a unanimous decision?
Yes, so staff made a number of edits. The public art committee made a few minor edits on top of staff edits. And then, once the staff was satisfied, we went back to the public art committee. They approved these revisions, went back to the Parks and Rec Commission, who also approved in our meeting last week, and now just bringing it here for approval.
Okay, thanks.
I appreciate you going through this process again and updating this based on the recommendations that remain. I know that took time, and I appreciate that.
All right. If there's nothing else from Mr. Colwell, I'll entertain a motion.
Hold on, are we doing these things separately?
Sorry?
Okay, sorry.
I separated them.
Okay, yes.
Yeah.
Sorry.
So we're approving revisions at this point, correct?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the revisions. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously. And the location is the second item?
Yes, thank you. So the council asked for a new location for the sculpture that was previously recommended to be in downtown, and we're coming back with the recommendation put on the town campus. And more specifically, just to the, if you're pulling into the main drive, just to the right of the main drive, there's some photographs in your package of that little hill that's there. And this location would blend in well with the surroundings there, as well as not be disrupted during the construction that's planned over the next couple of years. So we should be able to place it there and then not have to move it.
All right. And just a quick check with the town manager. Can you verify that we've looked at it as far as construction goes, and this is a suitable location from a construction standpoint?
Yes, it's all out of the way.
Okay, very good. Thank you. No offense, I just really wanted to make sure.
Please do.
Last thing we want to do is put something there and then find out we need to move it again, so.
Physically move it, right?
Yes. I don't want to touch it. It might cut me. I saw how pointed it was.
It was pointy.
It was pointy. Any comments from council, or is there a motion?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
So one was, was this location chosen because you got some direction that we wanted? Maybe the town campus would have been a fine spot in that this was the best spot on campus? Or did you guys discuss kind of parts around town that might be suitable, and then came to this?
Yeah, we did think about other locations around town. We have a map that does indicate where other locations for public art would be appropriate. And, I mean, it's not as though this wouldn't be the only possible location, certainly, but it's been a target location for us from the beginning, is the town campus. And so why not start right here? And so it felt like a good, you know, appropriate alternative to the original proposed location.
Okay. And was the plan, I see the photos here, was the plan to have it at the top of the hill?
Yes.
And, okay, so would there be some kind of little mini sidewalk up to it? Or is it...
We weren't planning that.
Okay.
We'll have a small pad, concrete pad.
Yeah.
And it would just stand on that pad.
Okay, and people, you think would know that it's fine to walk on the grass to go up there, I guess, and play with it if they want to stand around?
I believe you can walk on that grass there and be allowed to do so.
Okay.
I would expect most people, just the sidewalks right there, they'd see it from the sidewalk, and that would suffice.
Okay.
All right. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the new location for the art piece. Discussion? All...
I'm really excited to see this go in, and I think it's going to be a nice addition. And I was okay with the old place, but I think this is also a great place for that piece of art.
All right. Sorry, I didn't mean to jump the gun there. All right, if there's no other discussion, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, that was a clear throat, but not a no, I'm guessing, right?
Yeah, it was clear throat.
Okay, just want to make sure.
I did say an aye.
We want to make sure we got through tonight without too much controversy. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Colwell.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we now move into new business number one. This is a possible motion to close two parking spaces for an experiment downtown, and presenting is our long-range planning manager, Shannon Cox. Ms. Cox?
Good evening. Pull this presentation up. So I do have a special request of the town council tonight. This is related to our downtown master plan and parking study. I'm not going to give a detailed project update about the downtown plan, but I need to provide a little bit of a foundation of why we're making this request. So at this point, we have had some targeted stakeholder conversations on a variety of topics. Those were held over two days in nine meetings with 65 different people. We also had our first public open house on May 9th, where we attracted over 130 adult participants. And we have an ongoing online survey that has reached over 1,400 respondents, which is really great. We have decided to extend the survey through the end of June, or, sorry, June 21st, which coincides with the downtown Apex Design Charrette coming up between June 17th and the 20th, mostly here at Town Hall. The photos that I'm showing on this slide are of different types of parklets. So a parklet is a mini park area that uses one or more parking spaces. So you can see, they can be for just seating areas, some green space. This particular parklet incorporates some public art and education, and this is an example of one suited to downtown dining. During the first open house, we had a visual preference survey, where we asked participants to take little sticky dots, they were given three, and to kind of indicate which of these ideas they'd like to see in downtown Apex to kind of spice up their retail environment. So among the ideas, a parklet for outdoor dining got the most votes. Similarly, in our online survey, we asked, would you be willing to give up a few parking spaces on Salem Street to enhance outdoor dining space? In response to that question, at this point, we've gotten over 1,200 yes responses and about 250 no responses. So this led us to thinking, we need to try something out, test this idea. Tactical urbanism is something that's being used frequently in the planning field now to try something out before a permanent change is made. It's low cost, and it's intended to inform a potential long-term decision. In Apex, tactical urbanism may work for our downtown plan, because we have a perceived shortcoming, narrow sidewalks, not enough outdoor dining space, and a suggested solution that we can try. So our consultant has challenged our steering committee, several members are here tonight, to design and install a temporary parklet for the week of our charrette. So on this slide, you can see several examples of parklets that have been installed, temporary parklets, that have been installed in other towns where our consultant is working. Here's another example of the building process. They tell us this took 30 minutes. I'm not so sure. We'll see.
But in some cases, I don't mean to interrupt your presentation, but in some cases, they build it off-site, and then they disassemble it, and then they just bring it over and plop things into place.
Yep.
So it's possible that you could create something that can be fairly easily put together and then disassemble.
Yes.
I don't discount that too much.
Okay.
If they do it, now, if we have to read the instructions, I don't know.
Depends on your approach and your volunteers, I guess.
Okay, sorry. Please continue.
So we had two amazing volunteers from our steering committee, Alexis Jensen, the manager of our downtown farmer's market, and Shannon Flaherty, the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce, volunteered to take the lead as the steering committee on this parklet idea. And this is the design that they envisioned. So this is Fresh Local Ice Cream and Nina Parker Realty Group. This is the street view of the temporary parklet. You can see that we've incorporated water barriers, and that's from guidance from our police department and our Public Works and Transportation Department for safety. This would be secured, and we would have plant material to discourage people from sitting on or pushing against the outer wall. And then there would be some shade in the form of trees, some lighting, and some tables for people to just sit and relax and enjoy downtown. This would be built up slightly so that it meets accessibility standards, and we would also provide some gaps to address any stormwater concerns. We would also incorporate information about the downtown plan in the parklet so that we could encourage visitors to learn about the downtown plan and then come stop by the charrette if they are visitors to the parklet. We're also developing a brief survey that they can take on their phone or mobile device to begin to get information about what people think about a parklet. Would they like to see this installed permanently? How did they use it? So what we've done so far, I mentioned the review and input from the town's technical review committee. We've addressed those concerns. Alexis and Shannon have taken the lead on communicating with businesses, and that's ongoing. The owner of Fresh is completely on board. We've also gotten some initial support from Nina Parker Realty. Alexis will be presenting to the Downtown Business Association this Friday. We saw an opportunity to actually open the parklet a little bit early, to take advantage of the Peak City Pig Fest the weekend prior to the charrette. So we've coordinated with those organizers, and they would love to have it open. They've accommodated the parking spaces that we're requesting. And then we have worked hard to secure materials and volunteers. I didn't mention that there's no funding for this project, so zero cost, but a lot of time and effort. And so that brings me to our request to you, which is to approve the closure of two parking spaces on Salem Street in front of Fresh and Nina Parker from Friday, June 14th through Friday, June 21st. And then we would also request that we can recognize the businesses who donate time or materials to the parklet, not with a banner or anything, but just a small framed recognition in the interior of the parklet. I'm going to take the floor to also just share with you that we have now posted the charrette schedule online. You'll be seeing this come out in Facebook and email this week. We'd love to have you all participate in as much as possible, but in particular, this 6 o'clock session on Thursday, June 20th, that'll be the final pinup for the week. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for this. So I guess my question is, can you talk a little bit more about the water barrier? So I understand if people are parking, you know, they're not able to, I guess, go beyond that, but if something happens unexpected, like someone hits the gas instead of brake, I just want to know the ability of this temporary barrier like that will stop most vehicle?
Yes, so water barriers, and I'm not an engineer, but the guidance we've been provided by our engineers and police, water barriers are used in construction sites. You've probably seen them. They're called jersey barriers sometimes to block construction workers from moving traffic. They're, they would actually be pulled out slightly from the face of the parklet, per our recommendation from our staff, so that the sides couldn't be hit if somebody accidentally goes a little too far forward or backward.
Thank you.
They absorb a lot of energy, is one of the benefits of those.
Yeah.
And if somebody's coming down there and doing their cellphone and decides to take a swerve, this is a really good way to absorb that energy and not let it hit people.
They also use them in NASCAR, by the way, in front of, in front of the end of a wall or something like that. So they do, they do provide really good absorption of energy. So a car going even 25, 27, which, you know, would be pretty fast through that area, it would absorb that energy. And, you know, the water itself will probably splash a lot. I mean, there's going to be some give, but that's the absorption. But at slow speeds, this is, I think this makes sense. This would be plenty.
And just to add to that, there is a design guide for these types of projects that we're using, and this is one of the suggested barriers they recommend.
Did the folks have any experience with, if there were any accidents in previous versions of this in other cities that they knew about?
So we didn't ask that specific question. There were questions about safety that came up during the steering committee meeting, and STAN Tech didn't offer that there were ever any other issues. Also, in the design guide, it wasn't noted, but I haven't done thorough research on whether there've been accidents with these.
Every time I've gone through town, it's been pretty slow. I can beat people on my bicycle.
Yeah.
Well, hers is electric.
One, I guess one good safety check for that. Who, presumably from the town staff, is going to verify that the safety barriers are properly installed before we open it, so to speak? installed before we open it, so to speak?
So the current plan is that if approved, Public Works and Transportation would place the barriers Friday morning, prior to any materials or other installation happening.
All right. Or maybe, maybe another way to ask that question, maybe I can ask more direct, do we feel like we would want at least a police officer or somebody to look at it before we allow people onto the thing and say, yes, it's safe? Or whoever the right, right person is?
Yes.
Okay. That's really what I'm asking is just, can we?
We'll be sure.
Yeah, that the inspector needs to be someone other than the installer. That's kind of what I'm getting at. I mean, I, you know, everybody's ever gone through any kind of, whether it's engineering or other very important things that you've done, you want the inspector to be different from the installer so that you're not inspecting your own work.
That sounds good.
99% of the time, that's good for honest people, but people make mistakes too. So, all right. Well, any other questions for Shannon?
So I guess if folks are not on social media and don't find out about it, will we be doing other things like putting in any utility bills? Will we have like a flashy thing saying, "Parklet's coming?" Or something like that?
So I would treat this as one part of our entire downtown plan outreach effort. We did do utility bills for the downtown plan, mailers. We have also posted eight and a half by 11 flyers many places, the library, community center, all along downtown. We are directing people to the website, so hopefully they have some way to get online. And we do plan to update those eight and a half by elevens now with the charrette schedule and including information about the parklet if approved.
You're asking for seven days only. Would it be better from what your thoughts are to actually have it twice that long? Give people more time to come down and?
What would you, or another way to ask that, what would you do if you had it for 14 days? Would that make any difference in your evaluation or the data you collect or?
I think just like the survey, which we decided to extend, it would allow us to reach more people if we're willing to close parking spaces for that much longer. The only thing that I feel I would need to check on is the, so for example, the trees will be loaned, you know, if they're willing to loan those an extra week, and other materials may be loaned. So coordinating the materials and volunteers would be my main question.
I'm not opposed to figuring out how to do a little longer, because that was my first response was like, wow, I hope I, I gotta put this on my calendar. I'm gonna wake up one morning and realize it's come and gone and I missed it. And I certainly don't want to say, let's put it there for two months. But I think if we wanted to say, as a council tonight, if we wanted to consider authorization for the time that was requested and up to a certain number of days additionally, we could do that. And then we could let staff determine what makes sense within that window. Would that work if we did a window of a termination date? And then you could look at it and go, I can't keep the trees that long. Oh, well, good idea, but can't do it. Or maybe everybody's on board, you know?
Yep, I would appreciate that flexibility.
Okay.
What I had though was that if you're cutting it, if you're shutting it down Friday 21st, that will allow the weekend crowd to use those parking spots though. So, I mean, there's probably a value in ending it at, on a Friday like that.
Or to use the space.
I mean, I think, there'll be a lot of people in downtown for that Pig Fest. I think the, having it at least during that was, was a good, a good move. I'm fine with it, but I, the specialness of it may wear off after a little while that until we do, if we want to do permanent ones of these, obviously that would be a different story, but.
Sure.
I think, and, you know, up to a certain amount, like you said, up to about two weeks is reasonable.
Yeah. I think you'll have, you know, more diversity of folks who will, who may not be online as much to find out more about, give them more time to find out more about. I think that would be better.
And it takes time for people to get accustomed to something like this. I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, and I'm also not afraid of the data. I think that, two things I'd like to say about this before we get into a motion. One is whether I think this is a fantastic idea for permanent or not can be, I can compartmentalize that and put that aside and look at this and say, is this a good experiment? Which is a different question. And I look at this and go, this is a fantastic experiment. One reason why is you hear people say all the time, don't take away the downtown parking spaces. Okay, what happens if we take away two? How does it impact us? If we put in an amenity that people find more attractive than two spaces, is that actually a better thing in the long run? How do we know if we don't try it? And then the second part of that is, yeah, but experiments cost money, and staff, to their credit, have done a great job of finding local donors, volunteers, and people to help put together a budget-friendly, free-to-the-taxpayer experiment. And I, I think not only is it a great idea to set up this experiment, collect the data, but if we can, if we can find a way to collect at least 10 days' worth of data, that's better than four days' worth of data, or even seven, because then you, you reduce the chances that your data is off, right, Mr. Stats?
Sure, yeah.
The more data you points you can collect, the more reliable your, your conclusion based on that. And so I, I, I hope the council will support this experiment. I think this is, I, I know that there's going to be some people who will say, we can't afford to lose even two spaces. I think the, the data that was collected by staff a few months ago has shown that, that the anecdotal stories don't align with the data that were collected, which means there are spaces out there if you know where all you can park. And maybe that's a different challenge, right? Do we have enough signage and other things about what's allowed for parking? The other is whether or not they think that's a good use of space downtown. But everywhere that we've been, I think, I can't speak for everybody, so I'll speak for myself. Everywhere I've been where people have done some version of this or even bigger versions are usually full of people, and they're not sitting there with crickets only. And I think this, especially when we've got a downtown that's already attracting people, if we put something in here, I think it'll be, I predict it'll be a raving success, and then people will, when we pull it down and put all the parts back to where they came from, people will be like, that was great, can we get the permanent one? When, when, when? Right? I think that's what's going to happen. So from the other side of that story, we have to be willing to do multiple things at one time, which is continue to pursue additional parking opportunities around town, help others realize that the days of being expected to, you know, the 80s were a great time to park downtown because nobody went, and so you could always find a space. I was here for that, I remember. It was, you know, half the businesses were shut down. So this is a good problem to have, and I think when people want to go downtown, you give them someplace to sit, they're going to be shopping at more than one location during their two hours or whatever it is that they make of their evening.
So, oh, you can say?
I'm just thinking about they're gonna buy ice cream, and then they're gonna go buy a house right after that.
Right. Or buy a house to make ice cream.
There you go.
So I'm ready to make a motion to approve this. I think that it's, the process is inclusive. I think it's innovative, and I think that's what towns like us have to do. For people to complain about parking is because they want to be downtown, you know? And so if people complain about parking but then think this is good, that tells you something. So they're balancing out sort of the value of being down here. So I think we need to figure out the parking for daily stuff, but also for special events. But I think this is a great thing to do. I think it's also being responsive to people, so that's my motion.
Do you want to do the extended part also?
Oh, yeah, and so to include the extension of up to?
Couple of weeks?
Two weeks?
Up to 14 days.
Up to 14 days.
That would be my suggestion.
Okay, 14 days.
So, so you could change the, you know, you could change the date to June 28th, I guess? Just add a week to what you got there. And it would be an up to, so no requirement to keep it the whole time, but whatever you think you can make work.
Okay, thank you.
So can I ask, and so would that change the, you said you wanted us to try to come out Thursday, June 20th at 6:00? Would that change it? Would you want us to come?
That's still scheduled charrette.
Oh, that's a sh, okay, got it.
That means you could come back and bring others. If you can find a space. I think the chairs, I think the chairs are going to be full.
I'm a clipboard, but sign up sheet.
No doubt.
Yeah, after I said the thing about the Friday and having the weekend for parking, the next weekend would be a good test of a normal weekend's usage too. And so I think that's, I'm, I'm kind of going back on what I said the first time about the parking spots.
Are you volunteering to help with the data?
Sure. If you need it, we've got pros doing it, I guess.
I'll add it to my motion.
Okay.
I need a second. All right, we've got a second to the motion with the extended date. Any discussion on the motion?
I think, I'm real excited about this because I think it'll show really the value of those parking spots. And I think, you know, right now, we're giving, it's free right now, free parking for people, and there's, there's a cost to it in missed opportunities. And I think this is going to show possibly a really good opportunity that, or good version of an opportunity we might have, so I'm real excited.
All right. If there's no other discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Shannon.
Can I ask about the second piece of this as well? The, whether or not we can recognize?
Yes. Is there any objection? I think we've already had the motion, but is there any objection from a council member?
No objection.
If there's no objection, then please feel free to give the recognition.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I think that's an appropriate thing to do. All right, we now move on to new business number two, and this is a possible resolution to forgive two loans made to the DHIC. And here to speak to that, Mr. Town Manager, and I believe you have at least one person. I heard you introduce yourself earlier, but I don't want to jump the gun, so I'll just turn the floor over to Town Manager.
He's just here in case there are any questions.
Okay.
So in 1996, 1999, the town granted loans to DHIC related to paying fees associated with the construction of the Beach Ridge apartment complex, which is at the end of Upchurk Street. Seventy-two apartment units and mix of two- and three-bedroom homes available to households with income 50% or less of the Wake County median household income. So it's an affordable housing project. It's been, by all accounts, very successful. What DHIC is asking for is would we forgive these loans? So they're, they're loans that when they, when they expire, they're, they're due and payable in full. There's no interest being collected, there's no interest accruing on these loans. So what they're asking is, would the council forgive the loans? It's a total of $163,940. And it just, the purpose is it'll, it'll make their current task of refinancing this project easier to have one less debt item on their, on their books. Their intent is to reinvest about a million dollars into Beach Ridge to make improvements exterior and interior to have that project live on. So that's the ask, is to forgive the loans.
Okay. All right. Can you, can you briefly speak to the finance of that, how it impacts the town? Right now, the loans are there with no interest.
Correct.
Is there, are there principal payments being made?
No, there's no principal payments being made. The, it's a balloon payment at the end of the, of the loan term.
Okay. All right. So, and it was set up that way intentionally, quite intentionally when it was first put in place?
Right. It was all aimed as, as an incentive to help this project develop here in town for affordable housing.
Okay. All right, questions or comments?
So for me, it's no secret, I've talked about being a fan of DHIC, being aware of them since I started anti-party work in '96. Housing is what all of us have to have. There's a lot of things you can have, but if you don't have a, a place to live that's safe and it's affordable, then there's a lot that you lack. So to provide them an incentive to serve people in Apex in the past, and then to reinvest when our town is getting more expensive to live in, I think it's the right thing to do, and looking forward to more things with groups like DHIC who understand what poverty really is.
I completely agree. I mean, we, we had a, a meeting last year discussing affordable housing, and my thought is any way that we can help to facilitate that because it is house, housing that is missing quite a lot in the Triangle area. So I will be glad to support this.
I just read an article in the newspaper about the school board is looking to bus kids around more to get more equitable. It always troubles me that we want to integrate our schools, but we don't want to integrate society. So I think this is a good approach to bringing lower-income people into our, keeping them in our community, and it's a way of enhancing the schools automatically with the, the mix of people. So I, I, I will say I'm in favor. I think it's a good, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I, I also agree, and I know we did a DHIC development that, across from Walmart, that we had a similar loan, and then Wake County proceeded to throw some, some loan forgiveness or whatever. I forget exactly how that was structured as well. So obviously, a lot of people think this is, it's a great, great company and a great people to work with, and I think this would be a nice, if it at least updates of that apartment complex, that's going to be great as well. So I'm excited.
All right, is there a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Could we amend the motion?
Yeah.
What the attorney will explain what the addition needs to be.
Just one thing we collected to put into the resolution was just an authorization to allow the town manager to execute any documents necessary to actuate the intent of this resolution.
All right, so friendly amendment to, for Ms. Dozier to authorize the town manager to negotiate any such agreements as the town attorney just mentioned?
So moved.
All right, and friendly amendment? Okay, great. Any discussion on the motion to approve the forgiveness and the authorization for the town manager? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, that passes unanimously. We now move to new business number three. Our assistant town manager, Sean Purvis, wants us to adopt a budget or something. Mr. Town Manager Assistant Budget Extraordinaire.
Good evening, Mayor, all members of town council. So nothing's changed in the budget since your public hearing. We did not receive any additional comment from the public. Council did discuss some of the positions at the last meeting. That was the only change we were kind of waiting on, just, and that really had no bearing on the numbers as far as finances. It was just a matter of what we would be approved on in the position forecast. So with that, we stand by waiting for you to approve a budget, which has to be done by July 1. So if we go ahead and do it, we can be ready to go. But so roughly 65 million in, in the general fund, 43, 44 million in the electric, 23 in water and sewer, and then our 11, 12, and our other funds and projects. So a total budget of approximately $144 million.
All right.
So this would be the budget and the fee schedule for the, for item number three on your agenda.
All right, great. I know we've talked about this for months, but I just want to see, everybody's got everything in front of them. Is there any discussion?
I had questions. So there was no, no emails since we last saw you with this? There's been no emails on that?
We have not received anything. I mean, it's been, it's been on the, you know, on the website. We do have the, the email specifically for receiving budget input, so nothing's been there, so.
Okay, so no comments.
So I'd like to, at this time, call for a motion to adopt the 2019 and 2020 annual budget ordinance and 2019 and 20 fee schedule.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion to approve? All in favor indicate?
Sorry, I just want to say, I think that, Sean, you and Amanda and the manager, I think did a great job with this. I'm, I think it's a very strong budget, and I-
We, we appreciate it. There's a lot that goes in from finance, budget, and all the departments, so. And what we'll continue to do is, once we have this approved now, there's the document itself, we have pieces that we'll finalize and put together. We don't want to spend a lot of time printing and bounding and doing all that work until we know what it is. So we'll finish that up, and you'll have that within- So we'll finish that up, and you'll have that within a few weeks as well, so.
Yeah, I've seen this whole process, I guess, I'm not sure, I saw it from the beginning last time, it's, it's a, somewhat Herculean, and I think you guys did a great job.
Excellent, lots of moving pieces.
Yeah.
I'm hoping you'll get some sleep soon.
Yeah. And been too bad in the last month, so.
All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously. And before we move on to new business number four, and I just wanted, I, I wanted to say also, this is outstanding effort by our staff, everyone. As a council member, and Councilman Jensen was here when I first started as a council member in December 2009, here we are 10 years later. The, besides the obvious where the budget is bigger than it was, it's also much more grown up. It is much more mature. It is able, you're able to look at the items, understand where they go, how they align, how, I, from a transparency standpoint, you may have to have some finance people help you as a citizen, but to understand this budget has never been more transparent. To understand where your money is going as a taxpayer, and that's not a knock on the past, it's a time that our town has grown. I mean, we've gone from whatever we were back then, I don't know, 30,000 people, to 56, you know, or something like that. And so we needed to grow up as, as a, as a town government, as a staff, but also budgeting, which is arguably the most important thing that our town does. Before we provide all the services, we have to make sure that we know where the money's coming from and how we're spending it. So I just want to say thank you very much. And I'm, I know I've said multiple times, but to you, Amanda, and every department head that's contributed, and every supervisor that gave numbers to their department heads, and every person out there who gave information to their supervisor, right? Everybody contributed a little bit, and it rolled up to be something that I think we'll be very proud of. So thank you very much.
Mister Mayor, I, if I may make one comment.
Sure.
It all starts with the six here. Not all elected bodies are as involved in the budgeting process as this one, and I know that from, and Sean will say the same thing. And that's appreciated by staff, that you're involved with this. Starting in January, we start pestering you about the budget that we will adopt in June. And the investment of your time helps our staff present you a budget that's actually yours. And, you know, there are the places that call it the manager's budget, it's not my budget, it's yours. Once you adopt it, that's policy direction that you've given to the staff to implement. So Sean and I and the rest of the team really appreciate the, your investment of time in getting to this point.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now move to new business number four, which is similar, but now, capital improvement plans, because this is where we spend the money we've been saving. Now what are we going to spend it on?
That's correct, um, Mayor. So, um, the annual, the operating budget that you, that you've just approved, you know, annually, you do that, um, every year, and that's required, um, through the, um, through general statutes. The capital projects, they're, they're ongoing, so they're not just within the 12 months of our budget cycle, and so they have to be approved, um, just to get it set up and start. And after that, it just kind of runs unless we have major amendments to it and we come back to you. So with the, the money that's, um, we recognize, it's just adopted a little bit differently, it's not part of the operating budget, but we do need to still set up these capital ordinances. Um, and so with that, that's what you have in front of you. Amanda and Vance have put these together for, um, for you to review. This, uh, it's the cemetery, it's water and sewer, it's parks and recreation. Um, within your packet, you've got the list of those projects that, that are in there. You've seen all these projects at some point through the CIP. So they're included in the CIP, um, but the money is just channeled through the capital project fund, so that, from an accounting standpoint, it doesn't have to be closed and reopened every year, it can continue through, we, once we set that budget up. So that's what we're asking for at this point, is go ahead and establish these, that way they're there, and accounting can have everything set up in order, and not have to keep coming back and forth, so.
Okay, great. Questions on the CIP?
Yeah, I had one more, maybe to the manager or you. So, we, like, we had, last, last meeting, we had a discussion about the roundabout on Salem Street. But that wasn't in the CIP as far as I, I can remember. And so, how's that process work where certain projects seem like they kind of come from the citizens, but they're not in this plan? And can those go in this plan and, next time?
Yeah.
Or like, we've talked about the Beaver Creek recently, um, all those things, like, what's the interplay between what's on that and versus what we see otherwise?
So we can always address the, the one-offs that, that maybe have not come through the whole planning process, and we can present those to the council. Um, at that point, you can say, well, yeah, Sean, go find the money. Um, and if you say that you want to do a project, we'll come back and make a recommendation where the funding comes from. Or you could say, hey, that's a great idea, work that into the CIP wherever it fits. So, we, we try to respond to these, the, some of the, the opportunities and the one-offs that seem to have, um, some pressure on the elected officials and bring you some options. And then, from there, then downstream, we would, we would funnel them into the CIP if you did not declare that to be emergent enough to take money out of your...
Time, it's speed thing.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
And if, and if I may add on to that, and, and the reason that if, in the, in the CIP, so when you adopt the CIP, it, it's adopted as a planning tool, only year one, and it says this in, in the CIP, only year one actually becomes, that's the project ordinances and the, and which components are actually in the operating budget. Only year one becomes the budget policy for this year. Those other years, they're all planning, it's a dynamic tool, it cannot be static because those projects crop up. I mean, everything doesn't, isn't predictive. So we can handle it at that immediately, you know, depending on what council wishes, or, so for instance, those that we're not necessarily handling right now, they will be filtered into the CIP, and we'll figure out how we plan, plan for those as we move forward. So it's always changing, you know, everything beyond year one changes, and even year one, you have the authority, the ability to amend things as we go, so.
I'm not sure about it right now. I have a strong preference to have this process and not talk, talk about these things one-off, because I like to compare them with everything else and just see what they, how they may go into a plan. And, um, I wouldn't say I was caught off guard by the, the Salem Street one, but I think, I like to see it fit. Um, and I know, understand that there's timing things, but that one, I think, is probably a long-term problem that we could have had in this in the past years, and maybe still could have in the future. But, um, anyway, I, I just like, I like the process, like the, especially the graph with the staff versus the council decisions and how well or how, how little they line up, and that's always interesting to me. That's my favorite.
Yeah, and I think, if I, if I could, um, I, I agree, and I totally, I'm totally on board with that. Um, sometimes, sometimes there is a problem that's latent, and everybody's grumbling about it privately, and it's not until something pokes it, and then everybody goes, yeah, I, I hate that too. And all of a sudden, it becomes, wow, where'd that come from? But it was just bubbling below the surface. And so, it may be something we had our eye on, maybe we, maybe we, um, uh, knew that it was coming around, maybe it took us by surprise because the public maybe hadn't been talking about it. In this case, we all knew this intersection was kind of performing poorly for the last eight, 10 years, um, if not longer. Uh, but I think this is one of those where, as the town manager said, he's, he realized that it became more publicly visible all of a sudden. And so, I think, I agree with what he was wanting to do initially, is do you want us to do some preliminary investigation? And so all, that's all that is at this point, it's not fix the intersection, we haven't authorized that, and we probably shouldn't until we figure out, how does this slot in? Right? And we may look at it and slot it in and go, yeah, why don't, why, why have we waited this long to do anything? We just had a blind spot, you know? Um, or may, we may look at it and go, yeah, we can't afford to rush it because there's some other priorities we've already decided on, but if we can put it in our three- to four-year timeframe, you know, let's slap that in somewhere. Um, you know, my response as a town manager was, if we have, if we can measure a problem and define the problem, I don't have a problem investing in, in transportation-related solutions because that is our number one complaint. But I, I agree with you, trying to identify and slot it in is better. Um, I'll never forget, and sorry to bring this back up, but again, my first year on town council, actually, yeah, it was my first year on town council, we had a request for a new fire truck that wasn't, uh, do you remember this one? I see you nodding already.
Yeah, I think so.
It was in the first year, and it wasn't in the budget, and it was six weeks after the budget was approved, to amend the budget to buy a fire truck. And I remember, and, and I remember you were disturbed that, that soon afterwards, and I was too, actually, I never thought about it more. Why wasn't this part of our CIP? Why wasn't it part of, where, where did this, you know, what caused, did we lose a, a fire truck in the, you know, in the river, you know? What made it so urgent all of a sudden that we have, that we didn't get it in the budget or the CIP? And I never forgot that instance, not because of that one instance as being something that I thought, um, was wrong in and of itself, but as an example of, I want to keep my eyes open for things in the budget, and also things that look like one-offs. And, um, and, and so, I, I agree, when something comes in that feels urgent, feels hot, I don't have any problem with staff, off, even if we authorize staff, take a little time to investigate it. That's called triage in the medical industry, right? Um, triage the thing and figure out, is this urgent? Is this a head wound? Is this, uh, you know, open-heart surgery required, you know? Or is this, uh, just a stubbed toe? You know, we've got to figure it out. And I think, once we figure out how to triage it and where it slots in, then we can put it in the appropriate place. Anyway, I didn't mean to go on a little discussion monologue on that, but I, I agree, I just want to say, I, I support totally trying to figure out where the right place is for things, um, because we shouldn't always respond to whatever's the hottest thing. But if it is reasonable, we ought to find the right slot for it.
Mm-hmm.
I appreciate you bringing that up. So any other questions for Sean?
I will also say that I appreciated the, um, you know, the updating to the way the CIP process went this year. A lot less paper to deal with. That's always a benefit in my mind. So, I appreciate that, thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, is there a motion to approve the, uh, CIP for 2019 and '20?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously.[1703.43]